Okay, everyone, welcome to today's session. We have a meeting under the Committee of Rules and Regulations. I will have the clerk do roll call.
Okay, the roll call is Counselor Jay Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
And Counselor Taylor.
Great, thank you, everyone, for being here. The purpose of this special committee meeting is a, this is a subcommittee on the Rules and Regulations. These are the members of this, of this committee. And today, we are discussing the rules and regulations of the City Council. I know that the body, the council body, and members of this body have expressed interest in revisiting the rules of the City Council and perhaps revising them. And just for the public who is watching, the City Council follows the city charter. We also follow the Roberts Rules of Order. But the premier and priority rules that we go by are our rules and regulations, which is a total of forty-three rules that we have. And we, as a body, can revisit them, revise them, and make any other suggestions. So today, we're meeting here to listen to colleagues who have any suggestions on edits, revisions that can be made as a body. We can present that as a recommendation to our colleagues, the council body, and then vote on those changes. So I will open up the floor now to see if any of the colleagues present here today have any revisions they would like to make or any remarks they would like to say regarding these rules. Counselor Todd Taylor.
Thank you. The reason for this meeting was to revisit the rules of the council and especially as it, as it pertains to decorum and proper etiquette during City Council meetings. I would suggest that we revisit Rule Number Forty, which goes to public comment first.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Just for transparency to the public, we're talking about the decorum, but we need to state what rule that is so the public will be aware to follow us through. Just if, if we can do it that way, if we're going to talk about a certain rule, if we can also highlight it by the number.
If the, I, I said Rule Forty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. So Counselor Todd Taylor, if you can mention the rule and just for purposes of, of everyone to follow along.
The clerk wants to read Rule Forty? Just, just for the public and then we can talk about it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
On the chair, on the chair.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Clerk, into you. We also have, Number Eight is also speaking decorum. So I think those two go together so we can just, you know, we don't want to get by.
Yeah.
Okay?
So we're revisiting Rule Number Forty and Rule Number?
Eight.
Eight.
Yeah.
Okay, Number Forty reads, "The President of the City Council may set a time limit on the public comment section of the meeting. No person may address the council for a period longer than four minutes. Any person wishing to address the City Council must first state their name and address for the record. No member of the City Council, including the chairperson, shall answer or respond to any questions passed by the public except by written communication no sooner than the next meeting. No member of the Chelsea City Council shall be allowed to speak or address the council during the public session." Let me go to Rule Eight. Speaking decorum, councilors will speak only on the question under debate. No debate will be allowed by the President unless there is a motion on the floor. Each counselor will speak only once on the question before the council. No counsel, councilors shall hold the floor for more than five minutes before any debate. One counselor may yield his or her time to the maker of the motion if the five-minute time is insufficient. The person who yields their time will not be allowed to speak on the motion.
Okay, so Counselor Todd Taylor, what is your request, your revision?
Well, I just, I think we ought to have some discussion about what, before we make a, you know, a motion to, to, to make a change in it. My, what we had talked about earlier in a closed subcommittee in the last session was that changes were needed regarding decorum. And I would suggest that the public, as far as Rule Number Forty goes, the public, that no one should be able to publicly disparage anyone on the City Council and, or use profanity when addressing the City Council. I'm all for people who want to get up and say, "I disagree with so-and-so about such-and-such." That's, that's democracy. That's, that's, that's within the rules. But when you start getting up and, you know, making slanderous statements about people, that's out of bounds, and I think that should be prohibited.
Well, if we're opening it up to discussion, I understand where you're coming from, but I guess the fine line here is, first of all, how do we anticipate what someone will say? Second, when we say we prohibit it, what is, what is the repercussion of someone saying something, you know? I'm trying to understand that.
So.
And third, I feel that there's a fine line of, someone can easily say, you know, "It's my freedom of speech to say whatever I want." So I'd be interested in, in hearing.
So, so it's not freedom of speech because freedom of, free, first of all, you can't yell "fire" in a, in a crowded theater. We have rules to this body, and you can't just come up and start saying anything you want that are against the rules. You know, I think that if you do do that, if you allow that to happen, which is what has gone on in the past, you know, you, you have chaos in the, in the City Council chamber, and, you know, it, it just goes on and on and on. And so then, then, you know, we're going to end up in a lawsuit somewhere where, you know, somebody's going to sue the city. So my, my intent on doing this is to be proactive and to try to head off these types of situations. There's no, I can't think of a situation where it would be okay for some member of the public to come up here and make slanderous statements against somebody. It doesn't do, it doesn't forward any kind of debate, any kind of.
I'm sorry, can you take any phone calls outside of the chamber, please? Thank you.
It doesn't, it doesn't do anyone any good to allow that type of, they don't allow it in, in basically any, any legislative body. Every legislative body has rules. And, and those particular types of rules were missing. And so what would happen if somebody comes up and does it, and how does that work? The President would stop them and say that you're out of order. And if you're not, you know, if you, if you won't stop speaking, then you're, you're going to have to leave the chambers. You know, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty simple. And if the President refuses to do his, any member then could object and, and, you know, and then, or, I, actually, I think that we ought to have something where the President must do that, under the President's, and I can't remember what rule that is, under the President's powers, but that would be my suggestion in case you get a President that just wants it to go on. So I, I think that, I, I really think that this is a necessary thing, not just for us, but for future councils. And, and, you know, if you can't have a discussion or, or public speaking or a debate within the City Council without calling people names or disparaging somebody's character, then, you know, you don't belong here. I, that's my opinion, you know? You shouldn't have to do that. And, and, and people, people, we're the elected representatives of, of the city. I, I think that each one of us has earned enough respect to, to, to ha, not be disparaged.
Any other member here, Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chairwoman. I agree in the fact that I believe that what we're trying to get through here is, what my fellow colleague is trying to say, is that there need to be some language in this particular Forty where that at any point in time that the President or the person, the chairperson at the helm sees that a person is, you know, vague language or derogatory language towards their body, towards the city, that we need to give a warning, it should be a warning. If the person continues, we should ask the person to, you know, leave the chamber. If the person does not, we should take a recess, stop the meeting, and then have this person make contacts where, if we have to call the police, and have the person removed. I believe by just allowing it to go on, folks feel that, in, in the day and age that we live in and some of the things that we're seeing.
Right.
Folks feel that they can come in and act any kind of way in this house. And this is a house of order, this is a house of respect. Excuse me, we put our name on the ballot, we run, we get elected. People elect us to do the job, the people's work here, and we should not be intimidated. We should not be yelled at or slandered against. And it goes back with the Rule Eight. We have Rule Eight, if someone is speaking, and this is directly City Councilors, the President would say, or the person at the helm would say, "That's out of order. Get back on the order." So we should have that same direction. If you're at the podium and you're speaking directly to the council about a disagree or something you like or something you don't like, it should be directly on that issue, directly towards the body, but not towards individual council stating certain derogatory statements. You know, folks are entitled to say whatever they want, but you know what? You have to have disrespect in this order. You know, we've seen that, things are really starting to perk up. And we, you know, a lot of elected officials are not here, but there's a lot of elected officials around the state, in our state, that's requesting security. Because folks are yelling at them in different arenas, and this is an arena. And, and we just don't want that to happen. We don't want to allow that. We need to try to put some kind of thought into it. But I think it's going to take some thought, though, obviously.
And it sounds like the consensus that I'm hearing here from both ends is we, I, I appreciate your introduction of the idea of setting a warning. I think that's, that's a good idea. And, and what I'm hearing from, from Counselor Taylor here is we will not allow any profanity, any derogatory remarks that are, that demonize a City Councilor particularly.
I, I just had one other thing to, to add, is that no matter where you are politically, this protects everybody because, because I guarantee you, there are people out there on both sides of the political spectrum that are willing to come up here and say nasty things about you or me or anyone else. So, and no matter who does it, it's wrong. So, you know, it's not right in some instances, depending on who's being slandered. It's wrong no matter who's being slandered. And so this is a type of, of behavior that is not a legitimate part of public discourse. Public discourse should, should, you know, be respectful. And especially in this house. This is the people's house, right here, the people of Chelsea. This is where they own this, right? So it needs to be a respectful place, you know? And, and, and don't get me wrong, like I said, somebody wants to come up and say, "I disagree with Todd Taylor because, you know, he believes in this, and I think that that's wrong." That is perfectly legitimate, you know? You won't hear me complaining about that. But if somebody comes up and says, you know, "Todd Taylor's evil because he believes this," or if he, you know, you, you know, "He's, he's, he's such-and-such because, because of this, that, or the other." And it's just not right. And, and, you know, there are, there are other types of laws in this, in this country that preclude people from saying such things. Whether you write them or whether you say them, those are the slander laws and libel laws. So you can't just say anything you want. Free speech doesn't mean total, you know, you can say anything you want. That's, that's absolutely not true, and, you know, the Supreme Court has said so over and over and over again.
Okay, so now, thank you. Now, I see Counselor, I, I saw Counselor DeJesus, I'll give her a moment since you already spoke.
So I just want to say, and, you know, this is my first term on the council, but I've spent many, many years here on the other side testifying. And I just want to make sure, and I agree with my colleagues in, in the fact that we don't want to allow our home, our, our community's home to be disrespected, but I want to be very mindful of the wording and the message that is sent when we try to implement something like this. Because we want to make sure that we are continuing to encourage the community to come and speak their voice, regardless of feeling, you know, like they are in opposition of something that we are putting forward. Like, I encourage anyone in my district, you know? I would want them to come up here and say, you know, "I disagree with my counselor. I would like for something like this to be pushed forward instead." And so I just want to be mindful that when we do think about the wording of this, and I, you know, I, I do agree, again, we don't want someone, you know, coming up and, and using curse words or whatnot, you know? But, but we do want to encourage people that if you don't agree with what's happening, it's okay to come up here and say so.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So again, that's what I'm saying. Basically, it's like we, we, we set the tone here, but we also have to set the tone as elected officials. We too have to have the same respect. And when folks, some of the reason why folks don't come up here, and they say, gee, that, that place is about to explode, because they see, they witness what some folks get away with coming up. And it's not, I mean, this is just the last year throughout the state, throughout the nation, where there's been some uprisings, and folks just feel like they can come in and stomp City Hall. I own City Hall. No, this is a respectful place. You come in here, you respect it like you respect your home. But we too, as City Councilors, we've had, we've had things in the past where folks felt intimidated, and it's not the intent. But you have to kind of like tone your intent down, tone your, your voice down, even when you're after meetings and before meetings and talking to folks. We want to get the, we want respect, we have to give respect. So we have to also look at, you know, how are the public viewing us? You know, do they view us as respectful folks? Do they view us as folks who go up there and really advocate and, and, and communicate in a respectful way? And so when I come up there, I don't like Calvin Brown, but you know what? He's still a City Council, and I got to respect the body. You know, so we want that, but we don't want Calvin Brown feeling like they got to respect his body, but I can go out here and I can do whatever I want and say, we, we don't want that. So we have a lot to do, and that's why I wanted to look at not only our behavior, but the behavior that come before us, because it represents us at all.
I.
Okay, and just very quickly, for the members that just arrived, we're currently discussing Rule Number Forty and Number Eight. Counselor Todd Taylor.
So, so I, I only wanted to make one other point, too, and I agree with what Counselor Brown just, just said. And I would assure Counselor DeJesus that no one, I think, on this council wants to discourage anybody from voicing their opinion. Absolutely, absolutely nobody wants to do that. What we do want to do is keep people from, basically, putting, putting the city at, 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 in jeopardy by, by using violent language, using obscene language, or by disparaging somebody's character. So, so that's all. And there's a, there, there, I think there's a big, you know, difference between that and trying to stop people from voicing their opinion, you know? I, I don't think anybody wants anybody's opinion, but we just want people to be respectful, and that's not too much to ask. And that's not cooling somebody, you know, trying to cool debate. That's just, when you get up and speak, you don't disparage somebody, you don't use foul language, you know, and, and you don't use violent language. I don't think that's too much to ask. I think that's pretty basic. So the, the other point that I wanted to make is, this is also our work environment. So, you know, if, think about what you guys do in your regular job. Would you, would, would it be, would it be proper for somebody to come in and start swearing at your, at your job and your workplace at some? No, 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 I, I, that's a rhetorical question. So, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm not addressing you particularly. I, I'm just saying that we have to think about that in, in those terms, because this is actually our workplace. So we have to, I think, think about it in those terms and, and act appropriately. And that goes for the councilors. And I, I, I couldn't agree with you more, Counselor Brown, about, you know, if people, we have to be, we're, we're elected leaders. We have to lead by example and try to be respectful when we're, when we're up here. I know that, you know, people feel things very deeply sometimes, and sometimes that shows. And I think all of us may have been guilty of that at one time or another. But I think that in general, when we're speaking up here in a City Council meeting, we should be respectful of our, of our colleagues. And I think that, that should be, also be amended in Rule Eight. Did, did we read, did we read Rule Eight? We did, right?
Yes, we did read Rule Eight. I do want to open it up.
We, we read Eight and Forty.
So if you just added a, if you added a clause in there about, you know, about those, I, I would say violent, not that councilors are going to do that, but.
It's just conduct.
Yeah, that, 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 that no disparaging remark should be made about another, another counselor. No obscene language.
So just for our clerk to take note, so it sounds like for Rule Number Eight, we're saying no violent, and you were saying?
I, it's pretty much, I'm sorry if I just jumped in, but it's pretty much just be aware of your conduct and your actions. I mean, we're not kids up here. We know what's right, we know what's, what's wrong. Just, you know, you're on television.
But I've heard, but I've heard some people, I've heard, I've heard back and forth that we're kind of inappropriate up here.
So that's what we need to be aware of.
I mean, both while I've been here and before I was here.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're in, you're in this house, we're asking others to respect. You respect, and you keep, you know?
Yeah, no, and, and I hear it, but for purposes of, if we want these rules to change, whatever we propose, we need to propose in writing, because of course, these are recommendations of these body, of this body, but other council members are not here, so they're not going to understand what we mean if we're not, if we don't have it in writing.
So if I, if I could speak.
Yeah, of course.
Because I wanted to say about Eight, it's your conduct and your actions. From your conduct and your actions while you're sitting here as an elected official. And that goes to say, you know, when another counselor is speaking, have respect for that counselor. You know, whatever side languages or whatever, I mean, have respect because you don't want it to happen to you. We, like you just said, we see it up here. Other folks may not, but we know it's like, it's distracting.
And the Counselor DeJesus?
This is solely for this body, right? This would not encompass any of the departments or any of.
Yeah, it's only for this body.
We can only speak for ourselves.
This is for City Council.
So, so just, you know, to explain here, our council body has forty-three council rules. These are the rules that we follow. And then, you know, if there, if there's nothing here that we can guide ourselves from, then we go Roberts Rules of Order. And this is just our, basically, it's our navigation map. It's our GPS to how to behave and how to conduct a proper meeting. So this opportunity right now is for us to have, you know, no one's right or wrong. It's a matter of us expressing our opinions of how we want to improve decorum, how we want to improve our, our experience as a body. But also, it's, you know, you could propose revisions and changes. We make those recommendations, but we need the whole body of the council to approve and agree with us and vote in favor of it. But this body here, that's now, you are welcome to present any recommendation, any changes, any revisions, which Counselor Todd Taylor and Counselor Brown have been speaking on Eight and Forty. Thank you, thank you. Are there any other statements that we want to write or state or any other rules that you're interested in revisiting?
I mean, I, I would say as far as what we present to the council as a whole, that we, that we enlist the city solicitor to, to, to write, to, to, to basically voice what we've said here today and just to write an amendment to the, to the rules. Is that, or, or, or the clerk even?
That's up to you. It doesn't require legal.
No, I understand.
It does not?
These are your rules, no.
I mean, I, I would, I, I would say that you, you, you're probably a better choice to do that if.
But I would want it exact wording, how you would want it interpreted into that rule. In other words, don't expect me.
No, 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 I understand.
Yeah.
But, but as far as, as far as, well, then we'd have to decide on.
You have to write it out, write it how you want it to look.
Yeah, so.
And then we present it to the council.
I like that, yeah, that's what I was about to say. We have to write it.
That's exactly what I've been saying.
So, 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 I mean, I, I think, I think.
Are you in the right rule section? Because these are duties of the President.
Yeah.
To keep the general public in order.
Correct.
To keep them from attacking you and to keep you from attacking one another.
Correct.
These are the rules of the President, powers and duties of the President.
Well, that's what we.
So are you in the right area? Do you want to put that under powers of the President?
Yeah, I, I was just going to say that, that maybe something under Rule Three, powers of the President, should be put in there, just, just so that there's some sort of, if he, if somebody refuses, if, if a President refuses to act when somebody is clearly doing something, there should be some sort, somebody can object and, and, and stop.
Refer to the holder who's ever in office at that time of their duty and responsibility. It's to protect you from those type of accusations from the general public. This isn't new. I was in really turmoil years, where we had to have the police officers up here a number of times.
Yeah.
But it was the duty of the President to stop the person from attacking you. And it was the duty of the President to stop you from attacking him, vice versa.
Right.
And you can be removed because of that. So if you want to put that really in writing, it's up to you.
So now, what I'd be, what I'd be curious and understanding, just give me one second. What I'd be curious and understanding is, when we look at our council meetings, we don't have any sort of security here that would be able to escort someone out of the council chamber.
That's usually handled when we see someone getting out of hand. We, we notify the station for who's ever in the area.
Call, police, call.
And a lot of times, just their presence of walking into the chamber calms things down. Nine out of ten times, I would say that happens. But we're alerted to that. I'm always alerted to it. Fatima, we used to have signals, me and the other administrative assistants, like, "We better get him up here."
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Brown.
So I've actually, again, as Paul stated, actually sat through some of these. And we have that power. We have that power. So what we need to do, what, what we're asking now is us to, we, we're revisiting it. We're asking that the President make aware and, and now putting it out front before, it's here, but it's not enforced. It's because of the last fifteen or sixteen years, we've been, the city's been running pretty well. But the last few years nationally. But the last few years nationally, throughout the state, a lot, it's not just Chelsea. Folks have just been uproar, so we're trying to now stop it. We're trying to announce a, hey, you know, and we don't expect anyone to come back up here and act the way people, as we're describing, people can act. But again, last night as we watched the Oscars, no one thought that was going to happen.
Yeah.
So, it catches you off guard, so we're trying to prevent that. Um, Paul is right. We sat here, we called cops on city councilors. Mooning people, city councilors from the stage on television. We've, in this council, when, when I was a body, when I think Leo was a body, when Roy was a body. But it's been, we, we've had respect, but over the past few years, folks just, oh, they don't, they're not gonna do anything. You could just, you don't even have to be from Chelsea. You could just go up there, do what you want, and just take off and start it up and just, you know, and, and do everything, and it's gone.
And no, and it's scary. I, I was personally here. I was personally here when I had someone come right up front and, you know, I, I guess meant, you, you know what, what I'm referring to, so it's, it's difficult.
And, and, and we also, let's be honest, we also, we have one of our councilors that, you know, we know him. We know what kind of person he is, was no bad intention, but when he approached a person out here, a person thought it was bad. So, we, that's our action, that's our conduct. We have to be, you know what? Your voice may not be bad to Judith Garcia, to Jesus Calvo, but if you go out there and talk to someone else and people say, look, man, you're scaring the death out of me, move back, and you don't move back, and you, you know, those are our actions and our, that's what we're accountable for.
Yeah.
So, let us stay in our place. Maybe we don't need to go out here. You know, we don't need to go out here, and even after the meetings and stuff, when people leave, we go out here. If they wanna follow us out, we shouldn't be going out there. So, those are the things that we wanna discuss.
Mm-hmm. Counselor De Jesus?
I, um, so, I agree a hundred percent. I, again, like, this is our home, this is the home of our community. We wanna open these doors and make sure people know that this is a place that they can feel safe in. Um, at the same time, I just wanna be very critical and mindful of how we put this on paper, right? I don't ever want to see a police officer on duty at our city council meetings.
I know.
That sends the wrong message to our immigrant families, and it sends the wrong message to our city. So, I wanna keep all of my fellow colleagues protected. I wanna make sure our home is respected. But there's a way to do it in order to make sure that we are not shutting down our space in our home to the public or to those who may be fearful of having an officer here in uniform.
Yeah, and I think it's also, and I, I respect that you bring that point, um, because I also fear that, yes, we should anticipate things to happen, and it has unfortunately happened. In my six years here, there's been one or two incidents that have escalated pretty quickly. Um, but I also don't want to limit, aside from scaring, right, our general public from, from even showing up to our meetings, which there's not a lot of participation, I also don't wanna limit too much what they ca- what they can say or cannot say, because we're too fearful that we're going to be hurt. Um, you know, personally, I've been called out on from my constituents, and I appreciate it, right? And I've been called out via phone and in person and, you know, and, and I've never felt personally attacked. I've never felt like they've, um, insulted me in one way or the other. But I also know that my role as an elected official, I am a public figure, right? So, part of my role, because I chose to do this, is, um, put myself out there to get criticized, right? And it's happened to all of us, right? We've been called out. And I think that we can't limit, um, and, and I understand what you're saying, right? What you're saying is, we can't allow folks to come here and demonize us and, um, use derogatory language towards us. But I also don't wanna limit and say, well, you can't say certain things that are not true about me. You know, if they think I'm evil, then that's an opinion. You think I'm evil, but I don't think that's a false accusation, um, because it's a personal thought. Um, so, I, I feel that, um, you know, it's, it's, we need to thread lightly without really limiting a speaker, because we're afraid that we're gonna, our feelings are gonna be hurt. Go ahead, Counselor Todd Taylor.
So, let me address a couple of things that were just said.
And they're not towards you.
So, so, number one, number one, number one. I don't think anybody, no matter who they are, should be intimidated or scared of a Chelsea police officer. Now, I know that people have different experiences with, with people, but this police force is the most progressive police force in the entire country. And that Chief Kais has worked tirelessly to weed out bad apples when something happens. Boom, they're gone, okay? And we've seen that time and time again. They bend over backwards to make sure that, that everybody feels, we have a policy in this city where, where immigrants and undocumented people, uh, are protected from, from, from any kind of police action. So, why someone would be intimidated by having somebody here? Now, maybe some people don't understand, wait, wait. Maybe some people don't understand that some councilors might actually be scared, because some councilors have had death threats, like myself, where people have threatened physical violence against me, against my family, have sent things to my phone. So, you know, let's talk about real threats of violence and, and real type of intimidation that goes on. I don't know if any of the rest of you have had that happen to you. I'm not worried about what people say. I don't, I'm not worried about my feelings getting hurt, okay? That doesn't matter. What matters is, is that we don't, we, we can't allow people to get out of control and talk violently or slander somebody, um, or use obscenity in our house. And anyone, so, so, look, I think it's beneficial for everybody, no matter where you stand, to try to walk in somebody else's shoes for a day. I do it all the time. I think, how, how are my people that I don't agree with feel? I constantly do that. I constantly try to, to see, and, and it, and it tempers what, how I do my thought process.
But what's your point?
My point is, is that I'm addressing how, about how this gets done, and about how we have, we, we can't, we have to do something that actually constrains that type of behavior and that punishes, if they don't stop, punishes that type of behavior by people being asked to leave. Like the clerk said, this is nothing new, this has gone on for a long time, but some people get out of control. And, and there are people who have gotten violent, and maybe, maybe not here, but I, I mean, I can think of at least one instance where somebody threatened a counselor here. So, so, you know, this is not, and, and that's somebody, you know, that's not me, that's somebody else. So, what I'm saying is, is that this is not some sort of thing that's coming out of nowhere. There's good basis for these things being enacted, and it, and it's not like, well, somebody says you're evil, that's just their opinion. No, that's not, so, it could be an opinion, but if you say that about somebody, you can be held accountable if you can't prove that that's true.
But we can't question, I mean, you could be held accountable, but you can't stop people to talk about how they feel towards folk, and I think that's what we're getting out of line at right now.
So, there's a difference between feeling that way and saying it in public discourse?
Right, I understand. But as Paul stated, that we're, by what we're saying now is the right direction. We're not going to this extreme. I, I don't think anyone feel that we're at that level, that we need to have police or even have a cellphone ready to-
I was responding, I was responding to another counselor's, uh, fear that we would have, uh, uh, a city, or a Chelsea police officer here that would intimidate people, and-
So, can, yeah, so, let me allow Counselor De Jesus, and then I saw, um, Counselor Garcia.
Like you.
Counselor Garcia, like me, to speak, just because they haven't spoken yet, but Counselor De Jesus.
So, I just, you know, um, again, I am all for demanding respect. I, my earl- my question earlier, um, chairperson, was that if this, this set of rules was for this body only, because we are no different than the other employees in this building, and I have gone around and spoken to the different departments, and there are others who have also been threatened by different people in the community. And so, I do not feel comfortable making a police officer be on duty, and I know that we're not going to that extreme. I wouldn't want an officer to be just, um, uh, positioned in this office if it's not for the entire protection of everyone, and even then, what message are we sending, right? Um, I applaud Chief Kais, and I love the officers that we have in our community, but I think they have better work to do out in the community, and if we ever do need them, I think we can call them in to support. Um, but again, I, I, you know, a- as we think about this, I, I'm, you know, I'd be remiss to think that, you know, our safety is more important than someone in, um, the Inspection Service Department, DPW, Planning Department, you know, they, they also go through certain people who have different opinions or have anger towards, you know, some of the actions that are taken through those departments, and, and that's the reality. That's what we come in, that's what we step into when we, when we apply for these jobs and when we become city officials.
Mm-hmm. Counselor Garcia?
So, I'm gonna echo, uh, Counselor De Jesus. I worked at the treasurer's office, and I got, I mean, you're paying me a ton of money for parking tickets. I get mad when I pay parking tickets, like, nobody wants to pay parking tickets. I got threatened a couple times. I even got invited to fight outside, okay? I was tempted, but I didn't go. Um, but I just feel like, um, to, um, Counselor Taylor, you told, you said, uh, you put yourself in, in, in-
Someone else's-
In someone else's shoes, and new families that come into the city won't know that our police officers are this friendly and are so helpful. It's not in a constant, you know, banner outside that our police officers are and that our city is, is and acts like a sanctuary. They won't know that. And, you know, in my previous job, I, I worked at La Colaborativa, I'm no longer working there, but, um, I saw it every day, our new immigrant families coming in fearing and come into a nonprofit organization instead of going to, uh, the police offices, because they fear the police officers. So, um, you know, we, we cannot say that Chief has been doing an amazing job, and, and I applaud him all the time, but it's not in the radio daily, it's not in, 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 um, how do you say that, um? It's not, yeah, it's not a constant message that comes across to our families, and I start working at a nonprofit. So, I just think that, yes, a, a, any police officer is intimidating for an immigrant family. It's just-
And now, I want to shift the conversation back to the matter at hand, right? Because, um, I, I think, I think we got off subject here with, with the police officer's statements, um, simply because, you know, the purpose of this meeting today is to stick to the rules and what changes we want to make. I've, I've heard Rule Number, Rule Number Eight, I've heard Rule Number Forty. Is there anything else that we should revisit from all the forty-three rules? Attendance, is that a subject of interest? Is there anything regarding public hearings that we want to change? Is there anything regarding the powers of the president?
Your committee now, do they wanna add something to Rule Eight and Forty? They should submit it to you in writing.
Yes, please. So, if there's, if there's any language, submit in writing and, and like that, um, yes, Counselor Taylor.
Well, Rule Eight and Rule Forty, submit it in writing to the chairperson, and then she'll-
Present it to them, yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay.
Wonderful. Any other rules? I know I saw a hand here, uh, Counselor De Jesus.
Yes, for Rule Number Six, um-
This is, this is only for members of the Rules Committee, however.
Yes.
Yes, but I'm allowing her, Nuri Elis, go ahead.
Yes, so, for Rule Number Six, Counselor, can you share with me, is this something that, um, all special select and standing committees shall be appointed and announced by the president unless otherwise provided for or especially directed by the council? Is this when we are, um, looking into the empty seats and all are different?
No.
No, no, so, this is, so, what happens is, once the council president gets elected, and one of his powers is to decide, there's committees, just like this one, you know, this is the Rules and Regulations Committee. His, he makes decision on who belongs on all of these committees.
If I'm not mistaken, there's a total of eight committees? Is that the case?
Yeah, I have it, yeah.
Um, so, there's a total of eight, like, around eight committees. I might be wrong or right. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, actually, there's ten committees. Um, nine committees, and then there's Subcommittee on Conference. And Subcommittee on Conference simply means this is a reconvening of all members of the city council.
If I may add.
Mm-hmm, yes, please.
And sometimes during the year, a special committee might have to be appointed to handle something that doesn't directly involve these committees.
For example.
So, he has the power to appoint, like, one time you were on one, I think.
I was on two, so, special committees, um, perfect example, pandemic happened, right? And we, we figured we need to provide help to our small businesses, let's create an emergency relief grant. There was a special committee created to help draft that, um, that application process, what that would look like. And then another example is, it happens every ten years, the city charter. The city charter is another example of a special committee. Um, one more thing I will add for clarification, in case there's any council members who are watching online and would also like to send a revision, you are also welcome, even though you're not a member of this body, you're also welcome to, to send anything in writing, um, in terms of revisions. Counselor Garcia?
Since we're fairly new, uh, I just have a question on attendance. What's, what are the rules on attendance and, um, I'm, I was trying to see it, but-
That's a great question. We actually have no rule on attendance.
There isn't any.
If people elected you, the people, if you don't show up, people can vote you out.
You're answerable, really, to the community.
There's legal questions that restrict us from actually putting something of that nature in. So, you can't really-
All right, got it. Mm-hmm, but that's a great question. That's a great question. Um, that's why we're meeting. So, um, is there anything else here?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we do have some visitors today. Maybe they would like to say something. Um, we did open it up to our colleagues and outside of the committee, so-
Definitely, anyone here who would like to speak.
Counsel Robinson there, uh, we got-
Anyone.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, anyone here, yeah, go ahead. Well, I don't think that mic is working, actually. If anybody can check.
There's one on the table, he may-
Oh, perfect.
At least, at least they'll be-
Richie?
We're having a few, um-
Testing?
Mic issues.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ricky. And if you can just state your name and your address for the record.
Is this, can you guys still hear me through this, or is it too?
Yes, we can hear you, loud and clear.
All right, so, um, it's Alexander Floyd Vargas, I'm over at two sixty Clark Ave, Permian Eight oh seven in Chelsea, Massachusetts. It's the Margolis Building of the Chelsea Housing Authority. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, everybody for letting me speak. Uh, can I, I did have a question. Is her mic working? Cause it's like, it was a little hard for me to hear her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, uh, I apologize, it does seem that way to me. I apologize if I'm, if I'm mistaken. Um, yeah, I, I, what I've heard so far, I'm trying to remember, uh, going through this. I'm not sure what slander means in terms of the rules and regulations, uh, especially in the social media world. That gets very blurry. Uh, but unfortunately, too, you know, everything gets commented on, it happens in ten seconds, and then you get the whole world commenting on it by the time the third hour, not even the third hour sometimes. Sometimes the second hour, it's already done. Um, I mean, I would assume that people will know that they're in the city and city business, they can express themselves. I would hope not to get, you know, nasty, vicious, arrogant, stuff like that. I would assume most people, maybe not everybody, and there might even be an issue medically, too. Um, you know, if there's a reason, but hopefully, um, you know, everybody's an adult here and they know, in most cases, and thank God, there hasn't been anybody who has a gun or a knife or anything like that. In Boston, that's, that's a lot harder to, you know, find out about. Um, but yeah. know, find out about. But yeah, unfortunately, politically in the last four years or five years, it's been very nasty. It's very social media. And I'm on social media, too, and even I'm getting a little tired of it, you know, and I've only been on it for twelve years, and even I go, you know, there's more than one side to a story. You don't need to comment on everything like it's a final word. I saw what happened yesterday. I thought it was rude, crude, and then I said to myself, it's also arrogant. And then the problem is, I know that certain political parties are gonna say, oh, well, look, they can't even behave themselves. And I go, oh, man. Now I'm sorry I even thought that, but am I wrong? No, because I know that if I turn on the Internet, I know where to go, and I know even who not to look for, and they're gonna say, oh, another black guy slapped another black guy. So they don't know how to behave themselves. And it's like, you know, they're gonna say that. They're wrong, but it was still a little bit arrogant. But getting back to reality, though, because that's, that's also Hollywood people, and they know they can probably buy their way out of it, where the rest of us would not be able to buy our way out of it, and we would be in more serious trouble. But yeah, I think most people here, with the exception of a few Chairs of Political Committees and things, not here, but I'm talking nationally, probably know how to behave themselves. I've rarely seen, I've been in Massachusetts ninety-seven percent of my life, and I would say ninety-eight percent of people know how to behave themselves, I would think. So I, I don't know. I, I, I personally, coming from originally Boston, I would probably want a police officer here, but a second point, some people get very nervous, too, and there's been a bad video history, so I don't know if that would actually get more people upset or less upset, because I worked in retail. There was a code that most places had, if there was a shoplifting going on or some other thing. And that probably would be a good suggestion to sort of have like a code, or have somebody on standby, perhaps, forgive my air of quotes, but, you know, on standby just in case. But I, I would be worried with the, unfortunately, the, the video, social media thing. I think you probably don't want a police officer here all the time, but you may want to have somebody on standby just in case they can get here in like, you know, three minutes or whatever. But yeah, I mean, I've, I've seen worse. I've seen much worse in Massachusetts, but nothing that, you know, scared me in mo, in most cases, and I think most people know. The only other thing I would say is, in terms of, hopefully the pandemic does end, even though now I guess we have the flu coming back, of, you know, getting all the commissions and all the boards operating and circulating, because I've noticed like a few are just kind of almost stalling, to put it politely, and I don't see too many. I see only like a few. And then I'm not seeing a lot on the video and on the cable channels as well. And some people don't even know that some of these boards and commissions even exist. So, you know, I'd wonder about that as well. But I think most people that live here know that a lot of the police and the public officials do care, and I can say that that's better than some of the other cities and towns that I've lived in. And there's a better reputation here.
That's right.
Thank you.
Even though there's supposed to be rules and regulations, I like it tempered with a little bit of, how can I put it? A little bit of, sort of like a Welcome Back Cotter or Barney Miller, don't come into, don't come in assuming too much good, don't come in assuming too much negative.
You're, you're dating yourself.
Yeah, but no, but the good examples.
Some of the kids at home have no idea who Barney Miller is.
Okay, well, Barney Miller, Welcome Back Cotter, you know, compassionate.
Great.
They're leaders, but they're compassionate. They're not, they're not, you know, they, they try to listen to everybody, because some people are upset and confused and angry, and I've even had to deal with it in my own building, where, you know, they're complaining about this and complaining, and then when I try to ask questions, they don't have answers at all. So they're just kind of, they're angry. They have this sort of anger thing going on.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much. Anyone else? Susan, do you have any remarks? Wonderful. Thank you so much. So now, anyone else here interesting in adding any other rules, perhaps regarding accessibility, technology? Counselor De Jesus.
So I don't know, and if you guys could please share with me, what was the process during quarantine for public hearings? Was that just not done? Were they put on hold? How was the public able to access public speaking? And, you know, was, was it a system that worked? Did you, were you able to get the community input? Is there anything we can do for the virtual world in any future?
Yeah, so I, I think that's a great question. So first of all, let's clarify, the pandemic did not come with a manual. So let's put that out there. It, we were basically building a plane while we were flying it. And this body sat here, very late nights. I think there was a point where it was just three of us in here, because others, we had to figure out, you know, we had to figure out very quickly how to put together a Zoom, how to buy those licenses. Is it Zoom? Is it WebEx? An IT team was working overtime to try to accommodate everyone and everything. So at the time, aside from the hundreds of decisions we had to make, emergency decisions in the most case, what we did, and, and my colleagues can correct me if I'm not remembering correctly, because everything was a blur at that time, I remember the process that we had in place was the members of the public who wanted to speak would send an email to our clerk or our administrative assistant on a particular day, until a particular day and a particular time. Do you recall what day and what time it was?
It's the day before the meeting. So we would have the, it was the day before the meeting, I believe it was twelve o'clock.
It was, so I, the twelve rings a bell.
So if the meeting was Tuesday, it was Monday at twelve o'clock.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the way it was done. And I also recall, that's when we began the process of live streaming, like we are now with Facebook. Folks would comment on, and they still do, right, on Facebook, but we didn't have anybody monitoring that, because we can't engage on comments being made in Facebook and social media. I know that CCTV was also very instrumental in making it accessible via YouTube and, and creating that platform, but in terms of communicating with the public and making it accessible, I know that, you know, we got, we got a few, we got feedback in terms of making it better. But again, like, we were building the plane as we were flying it, so it was very difficult. Now, this is a great opportunity for you to offer any ideas that you may have in terms, because again, you know, we, the pandemic happened in 2020, we're still, right, battling it, and we get faces. So maybe it's still a good time to think to ourselves, okay, what might happen in 2050? What happens if there's another pandemic? Or what's, what happens if we have to quarantine again? Are there any ideas that this body can offer in terms of incorporating technology and making it more of a hybrid model for our meetings? Anything in mind that comes?
I mean, that's something that we, we definitely, as you stated, Madam Chair, as we went along, we got better. And as we're going along now, we thought, we're starting to look forward. And that's why that, when we have these committees, that's why it's important to just start the debate, start the conversation, and figure out, we don't know what's gonna happen. But again, with a lot of the subcommittees, we've actually, we, we kind of halt the subcommittees, because the, Madam Chair is correct, there were so many other important issues, funeral costs, you know, restaurants, a lot of stuff.
The hotel that we opened, remember?
And we didn't want to put up the safety in jeopardy by having them trying to get into the City Hall or trying to get through the, the WebEx and stuff. It was very costly, but we, we got better at it. We got a lot of great ratings throughout the state for, for what we did, being a smaller city and hit the hardest, we, we, we put up a good fight, and we, we fought a good fight. Yeah, and we're still fighting a good fight, you know?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I guess I'd like to know by when we can submit recommendations for that particular topic, because I, I do agree, you know, you guys.
I'm not sure if that's relevant to this. I mean, it's relevant to what we do when we go into the pandemic mode.
That's a different thing.
Yeah, that would definitely be something that's relevant, but to what we're doing here, I don't see any relevance there. But that's the Chair's discussion.
You, so allow me to understand what it is that you want to propose in terms of rules.
Exactly for like, twenty-one.
Okay, rule number twenty-one. Let's go there. Public hearings. Okay, so all public hearings, all public hearings must start promptly on time published. No Counselor will be allowed to speak on any other matter upon which a public hearing is being held until the public hearing has been closed. So public hearings is when folks come here and speak. You would like to add what?
I would like to add something that makes it accessible to folks. If we are in a time of crisis, and it's our second rodeo with a crisis where we're all in quarantine, then for us to reflect on what went well, what, you know, could have been better, and then implement something that could potentially support us in making these decisions and still including the community throughout that.
So, so it sounds like you're saying, so I, I, I agree. I agree. I think, I think it merits, given what happened with the pandemic, I think it merits to revisit rule number twenty-one and include the needs of the 21st century, right? Because it's not only a pandemic matter, it's also a matter of accessibility. Regardless of the pandemic, some folks might not be able to physically be here in person to participate in a public hearing, so we should accommodate and make it accessible for them to participate in other ways. That's what I'm hearing from you. So removing the, the, that, that equation. Counselor Todd Taylor.
So, so with all due respect, that, that, that's something that this committee doesn't really have purview of?
Of course we do.
No.
It's a rule, it's, we're here to discuss rules.
Pardon, pardon. This thing about public hearings, i- i- is about how public hearings take, take place, not
We already have it, to be honest.
That's right. And, and so, and so, while that's a legitimate question, and that, one that I think we can take up as a body, as a, as a body as a whole, I don't think that this Rules Committee has the authority to do something like that. I would, I would ask the clerk if, if, if.
I disagree with that. I disagree with that. So just for clarifications.
On whether that, whether the rules.
Those rules were sent towards by the Governor.
So we already have public hearing. You can't have a public hearing without a notice.
Right.
No, I understand that. I understand that, but with the colleague, what, so, so here, here's a conflict, right? The purpose of this meeting is to discuss and look at our rules and revise them. Two Counselors proposed to revise two rules. We have another Counselor proposing to revise one rule, and somehow we can revise two rules, but we can't revise one.
No, we can't. We already have the rules, though. You have to be honest if you're the Chair.
And I get it.
If you have a public meeting, you have to have it located in the paper.
She's not saying, she's not saying, she's, she's not talking about that, though. She's not talk, she's, she's not talking.
Can I, can I clarify?
Just one second, just one second here. I want to make clear that Counselor De Jesus is not saying that rule number twenty-one doesn't exist. I'm, what I'm hearing from Counselor De Jesus, and you can clarify, is that you want to make a revision to this rule to make it accessible to others. Please, please clarify. Let's allow her to speak.
Yeah, correct. So I, I'm not talking specifically to the notice or the timing the notice goes out. I'm talking in particular to the way that we make the hearing accessible to the community. So in any future instance, or in the many cases where we may have constituents who are homebound, and they are very passionate about the situation being discussed, them being able to use the virtual world that was, you know, opened up to, to the public throughout the pandemic and made accessible, that they can also have that accessible, even if we're not, you know, going through COVID.
Okay. So your revision is that, it's making it virtually accessible, the public hearings? Is that clear?
So, so they have, they, they, they have a degree right now. I mean, anyone can send in
And I understand that.
Communication if they're passionately, you know, I mean, that's the, that, that's the thing. And so, and so that's always been the procedure, if someone can't make it to...
It has not been the procedure. A public speaker cannot come here. She's talking about public speaking.
I understand, but when, what I'm saying, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that if, if someone's unable to attend for public speaking, that, that, that they can write a communication to be read, and that's the same as a public speaking, because your communication is being read. And so, you know, I mean, I don't see what the diff, what the difference is, if there's a, you know, I, you know, and, and to make, to make, to make some sort of a rule, so, so I, I just think that these rules are set about how we conduct ourselves within the meeting, not how those meetings are held. And so that's a different, that's a different question that I think is not in the purview of this.
Well, in that case, I can argue that we don't have to keep it in writing, that we have to behave. It's the same concept.
With all due respect, too, is that, is that for, for this committee, which has three members, and other members were invited to come and, and add their, their input, but, but those members who are not on this committee would, I think it would be better if they submitted their recommendations when we take up the thing as a whole, because they can't really participate in, in the actual, you know, mechanics of this committee. So they can voice their, we want their input, and I'm not saying that we don't. Of course we do. We, I want every Counselor to, but in, in this committee, there's three members, and, and, and we're the ones making the recommendations. Now, when the, when the full body takes up that recommendation, that's the time for somebody to submit their amendment or whatever it is. That's the procedure of this, of this council.
Well, I welcome discussion of members that are a part of this committee or not a part of this committee, but that's a great point. We can end the discussion, and everybody submit your rules, how you want them written, and we can present it to the body as a whole. But I do want to just make it very clear that any revision that you want to make is welcomed. We will send it to the body as a whole. This is not picking and choosing what certain folks want and what others don't. So I just want to make that very clear. Counselor Brown.
I think, you know, we should maybe follow up on this, because
Yes.
The Counsel has a point, from what I heard from the sidebar. But again, we haven't yet defined what these rules are, so we're saying, oh, we need to do this. And a lot of what we're speaking of today is already being done in rule twenty-one. But my fellow Counselor here is talking about accessible for, if someone is on the chat talking and saying, look, I got a question, and I then submit a letter, am I unable to speak? That's what she's saying moving forward. I think that's what De Jesus is saying.
Yeah, I guess I just want to explore the opportunity we have at hand, right?
More engagement.
We went through a crisis, the world shut down. Writing a letter and sending it off with your mailman was not as easy as it sounds right now, right?
Facts.
And so if we do hit another crisis, I don't want to be scrambling around figuring out, how can we have this hearing for this urgent matter that we need to do as a council body? And, and, you know, I don't want to proceed without at least having something prepared, since we have the time now, to, to make it accessible for public comment, you know?
Yeah, I agree. And the other part is, it has to be written. It's not, if it's not written, and another body gets elected, and they look at rule number twenty-one, and it doesn't say here that there's some sort of electronic, virtual world possibility or option, then we can't do it. So sometimes in this world, it's black and white, and unfortunately, these rules are black and white, and this is an opportunity for us to edit these rules and make it more accommodating and more inclusive. And I see that that's what Counselor Norielis De Jesus sounds to be talking about, inclusivity. So if you could submit and, and, and make your, your recommendation in writing, that will make it easier for us to submit as a recommendation from this committee. Anybody else has any other comments on the rules in front of us? Nope?
I'll submit my changes in writing.
Perfect. Thank you. Submit in writing? Okay, so this meeting?
New business, new business.
What about new business?
Rule forty-one.
Is there anything on new business before we adjourn?
I was talking to the Administrative Assistant, and she's getting concerned with Counsel is calling in orders and properly recording them. So then sometimes you could be accused of not doing, I didn't put it that way, I wanted it this way. So what we would like to see the office is all new business introduced by any Counselor must be deposited with the Administrative Assistant
Okay.
or clerk of the Council. Or clerk of the council before the Monday meeting, uh, in writing or an email.
Before the Monday meeting?
And I think the latest date is, uh, what's it, Thursday at four, uh...
Thursday at four.
Thursday at four.
Yeah.
If you can incorporate that or discuss it.
So make it, so make it very date and time.
Yes.
Okay.
This way, when you have something, have it in writing, give us an email and then no one can say, I didn't put it in that way.
You're gonna get an objection.
You typed it wrong or something. But it's all for debate amongst the whole council, but this is what we would like to see.
Okay. That's a great suggestion. I really appreciate you.
It is a great suggestion. It makes us more accountable. So, you know, oh, this is, oh, I didn't...
Makes the office run smoother, yeah.
That's because she said it over the telephone and you didn't write.
You, you might have misunderstood the person, yeah.
Okay, so that's a great, that's a great suggestion. Okay, so, um, we'll submit that in writing. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.